LakeCam is good?
Yep.
It's 4 o'clock, so I'm going to call to order the Lakeville Board of Selectment meeting for July 15, 2018 at 4:00 PM. See, LakeCam is taping. Is anybody else taping the meeting? No. Okay. So, our first item, we are going to have to wait until 4:45 PM. We have a time certain to review the LakeCam audit. So, we're going to go to Agenda Item Number Two, which is a vote to approve the Police Chief's employment agreement. So, Matt, Jeev, welcome, and your family, of course, everybody who's here to celebrate this. So, we have a copy of the employment agreement that we voted to approve and sign in executive session on July 1, 2019. So, we need to vote in open session to approve the agreement. I know that you have a letter that you'd like to read also after the appointment. So, without further ado, I will make a motion to approve the Police Chief's employment agreement.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's easy, huh?
Yes.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great to have you here.
Thank you very much.
You got a photo op.
Photo op.
Get a photo op.
Back over.
There we go.
Shake John's hand.
There we go. In the middle.
So, I don't know if you need a copy. Sure. So, we recently had a retirement of Officer Antonio Amaral. He, and I wrote this letter, as you can see, we got a pretty good response on our Facebook page. We had over 50,000 views on the video and over 600 comments from members of the community. I wrote this letter for Officer Amaral's retirement. Officer Antonio Amaral retired as a police officer with the Lakeville Police Department. He meritoriously served the town of Lakeville and the citizens with dedication, honor, and integrity for 26 years. Over his career, Officer Amaral received several commendations and letters of appreciation, proving his courageousness and compassion. His service benefited the town, and we will continue to reap the benefits of his reputation for years to come.
Great.
Very good.
Thank you.
I want to introduce his family, too.
Sure.
We did have a request to put his retirement up on the community sign.
Yes.
Between the ballot question, the special election, taxes due. I think the park is going to put it up on the Ted Williams Camp sign.
Great.
Great.
Nice.
Good.
This is my wife, Carrie.
Hi, Carrie.
Hello.
My 13-year-old son, Braden.
Hi, Braden.
My 11-year-old daughter, Audrey.
Hi, Audrey.
My father-in-law, David, and my mother-in-law, Diane.
Nice to meet you all. Audrey, do you have a joke you want to tell even if it's not? All right. Very good.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And we look forward to the police station opening and ceremonies and further ado, so...
Yep. That'll be in the near future.
Perfect.
Very excited about it. Very excited.
And certainly for the Middleboro Gazette, when we do the open house for the police station, it should be a meet and greet, the Police Chief, and the open house for the public, too.
Yep.
Good.
Some additional open houses throughout the fall as well.
Yep.
For those who can't attend, there'll be a full one.
Great.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
All right. So, Agenda Item Number Three is to review and vote on the fiscal year 19 end-of-year transfers. So, we need to vote on the second round of the fiscal year 19 end-of-year transfers. So, we have a list of transfers.
The rain just went to get the amended one. There was $100 change on the treasurer collector, but the big change is on the transfer station. It's around $27,000 negative.
So, do you want us to wait on this till we get the actual list of transfers back?
She should be here any second. But what happened is we are paying now for all the recyclables except for metal. As of June 5, that's my last statement, we were $12,000 over, and since the last three weeks, we're negative now $27,000 for just recyclables.
Wow. Well, that probably necessitates another conversation about the landfill moving forward. You know, in terms of, I know we've been subsidizing it for a number of years, and whether or not that's something that the town decides they want to continue based upon the escalating costs of recyclables, which has certainly been an issue, as we know through...
And this can't be an enterprise if they don't actually have positive dollars coming in, if it's all subsidies.
Well, right. I mean, there's a lot of conversations, I think, just to have with regard to the structure of the enterprise one, and if it makes sense to continue it, because if that's another change, then it makes it $127,000 or something that we subsidize, you know, the landfill or the department. Right.
So, here's the updated one.
Great. So, here is the updated list of transfers, which has increased by $10,000 and changes. So, what we are transferring at the end of the year is from treasurer salaries of overtime, $1,100, information technology salary, $1,000, conservation part-time hourly, $4,000, conservation part-time wages, $14,900, animal control callback stipends, $900, veterans expenses, $225, highway expenses, $27,525, going over to treasurer expenses, tech services, $2,100, town office expenses, $18,900, animal control expenses, $900, veterans agent salary, $225, and landfill expenses, $27,525. That is my motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Is this, so this is the second adjustment?
Yes.
Will there be a third?
No, he had to close the votes.
Okay.
July 15th is the deadline.
Perfect.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did I do it?
No, I didn't sign it. I just threw it under my chair so I could still own it later.
Is this the new one that you want me to sign?
Yes, the 20s.
All right. I'll let you do it. Okay. Agenda Item Number Four, this is a vote to sign the bond anticipation note, the ban for the septic repair loan program. So, this is the second $200,000 ban for the $1 million borrowing that was approved by town meeting fiscal year 18 through the community septic management program offered through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust for the repair and placement and/or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements between the Board of Health and the residential property owners. We went out and bid the ban. It came back from Unibank at 2.05%. I will make a motion to approve and sign the bond anticipation note, the amount of $200,000 to septic repair purposes to be issued on July 22, 2019, due February 11, 2020, payable to Unibank for savings with an interest rate of 2.05%.
I'll second that.
And discussion?
Yes. Is this the, it says it's the second of the million.
We're doing it in $200,000.
Right. So, the first, the status of the first 200, when do we do the first 200?
January.
And what's the status of that? It's all loaned out?
Yep. So, they had enough to do one more pending application.
Okay.
So, it looks like every five to six months. Because you don't want to borrow the full million.
And then when they get paid off, when the house gets sold, do people pay off this loan?
Yes.
Where does that money go? Free cash?
Well, essentially...
No, it goes back into the program. We have a debt payment, so it goes to pay off the debt.
I know what you're asking. Is there, is this a revolving fund?
No.
Well, right.
So...
Eventually, as they start to pay, I would think that you wouldn't have to continue to borrow up to $1 million, which is, which is, trying to think, probably could be 40, 50 septic systems.
Right. The first, we borrowed $100,000 the first time, $200,000, and as it gets paid off, it gets re-loaned. But now septic systems are up around, some of them are $40,000 and $50,000.
Right.
So, we have in excess of, we've done over 50 septic repair loans. So, it does, we use the payments to pay the debt off and then re-loan it out to other people.
Right. And the attachment to the house is being done by the Treasury Department?
No. The Board of Health and Town Council, they record.
It's recorded at the registry.
Yes.
Town Council. So, and I think your question, too, I mean, related to, what's the, we're charging 5% interest?
Yes.
Right? So, when it goes out, it gets loaned out at 5, and then that interest, when it's repaid, is going back into this fund to pay off debt service?
Debt service is at 2%. So, the difference, we've been leaving it in there to re-loan it out again. So, on your debt schedule...
The money itself, let's say the $40,000 for a septic system, that also gets paid.
Correct. Yes.
So, I would think there's got to be a point that as people, people generally do want to pick up their selling the house.
I was going to say, is it anyone that can apply that needs it, or do they have to be selling their house, or do they just need an update?
Anyone could apply, I believe.
So, is there a repayment?
It goes on their tax bill. They pay it quarterly.
Okay. But if they sell the house, the debt paid?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, the Board of Health and the Treasurer are the ones who kind of look at, really, the treasurer's looking at the revolving funds essentially for this.
And the Town Council.
The debt payments to see and make sure that we have enough on here. I think the concern would be, you know, do we have a debt service payment that's actually being paid for by additional borrowings and not by the repayment of the sewer loans? And I think that's, it's probably unlikely.
Right. There should be, there should be the schedule attached to this that shows us that.
Well, on the debt schedule, what you see, they call WAPAT loans, but now it's the clean water instead of the water pollution. You'll see the interest only, and I always put like tax exempt, because we're not paying it. It's equivalent to a tax exempt.
Right. I get that part of it, but I'm interested in the $40,000 payment back. Where is that scheduled?
Right.
There should be money coming in.
Right. You mean, it's really, the Treasurer should be maintaining the schedule of all of the outstanding loans, how they're collecting, and what the debt service payments are.
It is on there.
I wouldn't mind seeing that.
The $100,000 is $5,416, and it shows on the debt schedule that payment.
I think he's trying to say he just wants to match up the two, so that we have a listing of all outstanding WAPAT loans, which should be available.
Doesn't Debbie, like, keep track of it? I thought she keeps track of this.
It absolutely should be somewhere in the system, I would think. So, I think that's just what you're asking for.
So, email me the schedule that shows the in and out.
Yeah, maybe we can just have that on the lead file for the next meeting.
Yeah, let's do that.
No way, we all have it. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda Item Number Five, this is a discussion of a request to remove a portion of the Assessor's Map 63 parcel 002-023A and a portion of parcel 002-022B. So, we've received a request from the State of David Freitas to remove 1.607 acres of land from Chapter 61A for the construction of a house. We have been supplied a purchase and sale agreement in the amount of $179,000. Open Space discussed this, and they voted to recommend that the town not exercise their right of first refusal to purchase the property. We have a calculation of rolled-up taxes at $10,598.20 with a worksheet attached. So, I will make a motion to waive our right of first refusal to purchase the property on the Assessor's Map 63 parcel 002-023A and a portion of parcel 002-022B.
I'll second that.
And discussion? I have a couple of questions on this, one of which is really just ensuring that clearly KP Law has reviewed this, I assume, this request, because I'm not sure what happened with the last request that we had with Crooked Lane and the portion of a parcel to be removed from 61A. And I just want to make sure that this is something that is able to happen and it gets recorded appropriately, because we ran into that snafu with Crooked Lane where they wanted to remove a portion of it, and I don't know if it was just because they didn't repay the rollback taxes on that portion, but we kind of ran into what I would consider to be a legal snafu with a removal of a portion of a parcel. And that's what I just want to make sure, you know, that we check with KP Law to ensure that this is all contiguous land that is authorized for this to even happen. On.
Hi, I'm Kathy Muncy. I represent the Escape.
Perfect.
David Freitas, there is a plan already approved, so it's portions of Assessor's lots, but it's a legal lot now.
Okay.
It's been created.
That it's been created through that? Okay. Okay. That was kind of my question, because I don't think that happened with the last one.
Timing.
I know.
There was so much traffic on 45.
It came in just in time.
It did.
All right. Perfect. So, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Fortuitous.
Agenda Item Number Six, this is a review and vote on our annual reappointments. This is the time of year when we get to read everybody's names, and hopefully we don't butcher their last names or first names in certain instances. So, I will start with page one, and this will be the Police Department. So, I'll go through the Police Department, which I have to just stop at page one. So, the following appointments will expire on July 31, 2019. No. Just kidding. The following appointments are terms to expire July 31, 2020. This, I will read the title and then the names. So, Police Officer and Constable Andrew Sederquist, Thomas Norcross, Adam Swift, Robert Schiffer, Joseph Cowing, and Anthony Grasso; Reserve Police Officer and Constable Raymond Molesky, Nicholas Wade, Anthony Kearney, Harold Marshall, Jonathan Fillmore; Special Police Officers Thomas Higginbotham, Patrick Kurneen, John Vickery, John McGinn, Thomas Robinson, Joanna Odesso, Bethia Dwyer, Michael Smith, Robert Stefanian, Rebecca Kahler; Matrons Kristen Campbell, Karen Lima, Rebecca Kahler, Amanda Carrera, Robin Bellows; Keeper of the Lockup, Matthew Perkins; Surveyor of Wood, Bark, and Lumber, Fence Viewer, and Field Driver, we have Stephen Linus and James Bowles; Three-Year Appointments, Terms to Expire July 31, 2022; Police Officer and Constable Valerie Bartholomew; Sergeant and Constable Michael Dwyer, Eric McNeese, Richard Pacico; With the Fire Department, we have One-Year Appointments, Terms to Expire July 31, 2020; Parker Abbott, Junior Firefighter, David De Best, a Call Captain; Patrick Dunleavy, Richard Ekstrom, Nathan Gagnier, Dylan Hanson, Nicholas Hubert as Call Firefighters; Isabel Johnson, Brittany LaRue as Junior Call Firefighters; Joshua McCarthy, Brandon McClay as Call Firefighters; Michael McCullough as a Call Captain; Joseph McGreevy, Kyle Mederos as Call Firefighters; Chase Miranda as a Junior Call Firefighter; Aiden O'Brien, Nolan O'Brien, John Papoulis, Alberto Panich, Brian Perkins, Gage Ramston, Kenneth Schofield, Zachary Trokey, and Nathaniel Young as Call Firefighters. That concludes our police and fire appointments. Why don't we vote on that? Just to make each section go, make it easier? So, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Alternate Building Inspector, Robert Whalen, Jr., for a term to expire July 31, 2020. I guess I'll just make these motions, because each one is going to be kind of separate unto itself. So, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I'm going to assume no discussion unless anybody kind of shoves or stands up on any of these. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Assistant Building Inspector, Brandon Maroney, July 31, 2020. My motion.
Second.
I didn't even know we had one. Didn't, weren't we going to ask?
I did, and he's from another town, and they have them cover for other towns.
Okay.
If available, it's not paid or anything, it's just coverage.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agricultural Commission, motion for Henry Van Larhoven as a member, term to expire July 31, 2020; Tracy Trivlevin, an Associate Member, term to expire July 31, 2020; and Paul Hunt, Associate Member, term to expire July 31, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aswampson Pond Complex Representative, Nancy Yates, term to expire July 31, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Assistant Board of Health Agents, Robert Calucci, Derek Maxim, Christopher Spratt, term to expire July 31, 2020. All in favor? Uh, sorry, you gotta wait for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Appeals, this one we may have some discussion on. So, I have Janice Swanson as a member, July 31, 2022; M. John Oliveri, Jr. as a member, term to expire July 31, 2022. I'll stop there for the moment.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we talk about Associate Members. So, we have a note here that the Board has a vacancy for a full member.
Okay. So, can I just ask a question?
Hmm?
So, Don Foster is the first full member, correct?
I think there's four others.
So, Janice, yeah, so Janice makes number two, John Oliveri makes number three. So, there's four full members or five?
I think there's five.
Five. Okay. So, as far as John's name, we're at number three, correct?
So, there's three that don't expire, correct?
Yeah.
And then we have these two that we're appointing.
No, there's two that don't ex, well...
I mean, they will expire.
There's the vacancy, then there's two that don't, you know, expire this year. And then there's Janice and John who expired this year. And the other member of the Board is Dave Curtis.
Okay. Yeah. So, Dave Curtis is on as a member. We are not reappointing because he's already appointed through a term longer than today.
2020 for Don and Dave.
Okay.
Okay. So...
So, we have some notes. So, we have Chris Carmichael. So, we have an opening for a member. That's really what this is. So, we have a full member that we have an opening for. We do not have any formal requests from the ZBA to appoint anybody as a full member. It appears as though Don Foster would still like Joe Orbanski appointed to the full membership. He's not sure with some attendance on some of the other members. That being said, we have an opening for a full member. I am perfectly fine with appointing some Associate Members as listed and then pushing this back to the ZBA. If they want a reorganization, they can come to us with that, unless anyone has any other feelings, which I'm happy to entertain prior to putting any motion on the table.
So, what you're saying is, your motion is to just appoint the three Associate Members and then let them decide who wants to be the full member?
And send a letter, since we don't have anything from the ZBA with a formal request.
I mean, I'd like to see Chris Carmichael as a full member, but...
I'm fine with that, too. I don't have any opinion one way or another. Someone wants to go down that road.
But I still want the zoning board to give us a lot, give us a letter to that effect.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm okay with voting in the three Associate Members and letting them decide, I guess.
Suggest.
Suggest.
You need the whole Board, not just the Chairman's recommendation.
Yeah, exactly. I'd rather have the whole Board.
Chairman of the Board.
Have a recommendation from the Board. Okay. So, if we're all in agreement with that, then I will make the motion to approve Joseph Orbanski, Daniel Gills, and Chris Carmichael as Associate Members, term to expire July 31, 2020.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Registers, Walt Trout-Kling as a Register, to expire July 31, 2022.
Second that.
You seconded that?
I seconded.
It was like a yawn.
I did. I did that, too.
It was very like...
I'll second the yawn.
Wasn't sure what it was.
I got up at 4:30.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Cable Television Committee, we have five members, term to expire July 31, 2020, Robert Marshall, Frederick Beal, Ian Lewis, Walter Healy, Jr., and Thomas Siragnano.
Doing good on the names.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Was there an attendance issue with someone on the cable? I thought I heard that.
I had the attendance sheet, which I seem to have misplaced. Can't help but, do you have the attendance sheet with you, Tracy?
Mm-hmm.
Or not? Because there was a number of attendances ago. Nope, that one. Got it. Got it.
I do have it.
Got it.
That's the attendant.
Yeah, Chris Carmichael had not been attending, although he's an Associate Member, but so...
Oh, that was on the Board of Appeals.
That was on the Board of Appeals, and then...
Yeah. I mean, I think what would be helpful certainly is, you know, unless we hear otherwise, which half the time the Chairman never kind of responds, that we don't really have any idea as to what the desire is generally of the Boards. So, a lot of times we're just making decisions based upon whether or not the names are on a piece of paper from previous year.
Well, Bob Marshall did respond. He had reached out to all of his members. The only one he hadn't heard back from was Fred Beal. So, he did do a letter for the other three members.
But not for Fred?
Because he had not heard back from Fred if he still wanted to be on.
And I did hear back from all the chairs. They did respond to my request. Because when I sent out the attendance list, I also asked them to call their members to see who wants to be appointed.
Yep.
So, if they're on the list, that means that they want to be like, for instance, Tracy Trivlevin and Paul Hunt, they went from full members to associates.
Mm-hmm.
So, I did hear back from them all, though.
Okay. So, I guess we can either, if Bob Marshall wasn't sure about Fred Beal, who didn't respond, I'm happy to take him off the list and just ask Bob to follow up with Fred. Does that work?
Um, yeah.
Fred was injured.
Was injured? So, that he had no option to kind of respond?
So, he did miss some of the meetings for the...
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't really care if we leave.
But not...
We're not having people jumping at the door to get on any of these committees, so it's, all right. So, that's it. I'm making a decision. That's my motion, is all five of them to be appointed as members, term to expire July 31st, 2020.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Conservation commission. We have three with terms to expire July 31st, 2022. Joseph Chamberlain II, Richard Hagerman, and Joshua Tharity. My motion.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council on Aging. We have five members, term to expire July 31st, 2022. Catherine Duby, Margaret Gross, Robert Brady, Charlene Montfleon, Bruce Baptiste. And we have an alternate member, term to expire July 31st, 2020. Angela Bures-Burassa. Sorry.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Economic Development Committee. We have four members, term to expire July 31st, 2020. Timothy Fletcher, Robert Chestnut, Lori Driscoll, M. John Oliveri Jr. And one associate member, Joan Moran, term to expire July 31st, 2020.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Emergency.
If I may, too, I didn't think of this. I think we're short on the charge for the number. So, when you put out, not that the EDC is meeting regularly at this, they've sort of been put on hold.
But they didn't meet at all last year.
Right. But if they do stop meeting again, we need to.
That we're short.
Point someone.
Madam Chair, I figured after you guys did the reappointments, then I would do a tally of all the vacancies and then get them all out at once.
Perfect strategy. Works for me. Emergency Planning Committee. All terms to expire as members, July 31st, 2020. Michael O'Brien, Matthew Perkins, Franklin Moniz, Maureen Candido, Robert Sousa, Nathan Darling, Kelly Howley, William Purcell, Richard Madeiros, Jose. Sorry.
It's okay.
Jose Invezio, Thomas Parento.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Emergency Response Coordinator, Michael O'Brien, July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Energy Advisory Committee. Terms to expire July 31st, 2020 as members. James Kenny, Donald Foster, Nathan Darling, Richard Velez, and Joseph Chamberlain II.
John, you're not on that anymore?
Madam Chair.
I am, I think.
The selectmen appointments were done at the April reorganization, so that's why if you're on one of these committees, your name's not here because you've already done it.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I'm EDC.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Giatra Advisory Board. We have James Gouveia as a delegate, July 31st, 2020, and Robert Brady as an alternate delegate, July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I am missing page five.
Me, too.
Me, too. I have.
There is a whole host of people that will never know.
Well, I have it.
Who's on rent control? I think that's on there, which is me. Look at that.
She must not have picked it up.
I'm going to see who's on it and see who you don't like. There it is. That is the question that I had in my mind as to exactly where this particular appointment was that I did not see. Fantastic. Okay. Hazardous Waste Coordinator. Michael O'Brien, July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
That's not typically ever Franklin? That would be, I guess that's related to like chlorine.
The bills.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because the fire chief will go in to a place that has chemicals to do an approval, so.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Historical Commission. We have Brian Reynolds and Geraldine Taylor as members, term to expire July 31st, 2022. Kathleen Barak and Felicia Carter, associate members, term to expire July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Inspector of Wires. We have Steve Robert Canessa and Emilio Gaza. Emilio Gaza is the Assistant under Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 32A, terms to expire July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is the one I wanted to discuss, Labor Council. We have had a change in the chiefs that use Labor Council. And I am going to put forth KP Law as Labor Council, the term to expire July 31st, 2020.
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lakeville Arts Council. We have Robert Fielding, Robin, I'm sorry, Robin. Robin Fielding as a member, term to expire July 31st, 2022. Joanne Corry Upham and David Kramer, members, term to expire July 31st, 2021. And Gail Fish as a member, term to expire July 31st, 2022.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lake Cam, Jonathan Watkins is a member, term to expire July 31st, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Lakeville Emergency Management Agency. I am going to, I also want to discuss this one. So, I'm going to make the motion to appoint Michael O'Brien as the Director and Will Purcell as the Deputy Director, term to expire July 31st, 2020.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, what is that one exactly? Lima?
Yeah, so it's a group that meets kind of regionally with emergency management that I know that, we appointed Danny last year as kind of a transitionary position.
Yep.
And then it does come with a stipend, too, that's on there, just so people are aware. But from what I understand, he didn't really attend and kind of turned it over to Michael O'Brien, so.
Okay, but that's not something that we would appoint a police officer or like the highway department to also, correct? It's just.
I think it's more like MEMA stuff.
MEMA and MEMA.
FEMA and MEMA.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Master Plan Implementation Committee. We have members, term to expire July 31st, 2020. James F. Rogers II, Rita Garbutt. You want to still be on there?
Yes.
Oh, that was a hesitation. All right, good.
I'd like to see it through. We have to finish it December 31st.
Rodney Dixon, Frederick Beal, Sylvester Zinkowitz, Patrick Marshall. You're still good? Since you're here, I'm going to ask.
Second that.
So, okay, so I will stop there and say all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a vacancy, too, to be filled by a Conservation Commission member. So, that being said, they, so Patrick Marshall, he wants to be on here?
He'd like to be the Open Space Designee, but.
But he's no longer on Open Space.
Right, so we'd have to amend the charge?
Okay.
And we've been waiting for a memo from the Open Space Committee.
I have it.
Oh, you did get it, okay.
Okay, so I guess we have a memo that says that we'll put it on a future agenda to adjust the charge?
Yes.
So, that it can be Open Space member or their designee.
And we also have to amend the charge for Rita because she's going to be the Town Administrator's Designee because the Town Administrator is called out in the charge as the member.
I didn't know that. Okay.
So, we'll just do it all at the same time.
Stop trying to get out of it. Okay, so then we can send a letter to Conservation of saying, hey, you need a member, needs to be on there. Okay, so we voted on that, right? Is it all in favor?
Yeah.
Yep.
Aye, okay, again. Municipal Coordinator, Write to Know, Michael O'Brien, July 31st, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Municipal Hearings Officer, Matthew Perkins, July 31st, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. NIMs Coordinator, Michael O'Brien, July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Old Colony Planning Council Area Agency on Aging Advisory Committee.
Whoa.
That's an alliteration if I haven't heard one already. James Gouveia is a delegate, July 31st, 2020, and Robert Brady is the alternate delegate, July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Open Space Committee, members to, term to expire July 31st, 2020. Tiana Elliott, Brian Reynolds, Martha Schroder, Jesse Medford, Elizabeth Nash.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a new member? Discussion on that.
Yes, for additional people.
Where? Is Patrick Marshall, is he off of that now?
Yes.
He's off?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we have two vacancies, one at large and one from the Park Commission. Jesse is a member of the Park Commission, so we could put him on as that, but maybe we should just send this back to Open Space and advertise. I haven't heard if anybody's had anything to say.
They voted on a new member at the last meeting.
You will be appointing a new member later on.
Okay, so once we get that letter, then we'll have.
And we still will have, when I did the one at large, I factored in the fact that you were going to appoint Brian Anderson later in the agenda. Darlene Donley is interested in becoming a member. She just hasn't been able to attend a meeting yet, so she's going to try to get to the next one and then they have a full committee.
Give, and give us a recommendation.
Just serves as double Park Commissioner and.
Okay. Plumbing and Gas Inspector, John Catalano and Dennis Driscoll as an alternate, term to expire July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if I may, Tracy, the next one is Police Station Building Committee, not Design Review.
Yeah. That is what I have written down for everybody in the studio audience to see that as well. Let's say Building Committee. Term to expire July 31st, 2020. The hope is they'll only meet a couple of times, maybe. Tim LaChapelle, Thomas Robinson, Nathan Darling, Michael Boyes, Erin Burke, Sean Joyce, Colleen Ashley, Richard the Camera, and Michael Fort, terms to expire July 31st, 2020.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Project Review Committee for 43D. Still out there. July 31st, 2020, terms to expire, members, Brian Hoag, Robert Pelucci, William Purcell, Matthew Perkins, John, M. John Oliveri Jr., Nathan Darling, and Joseph Chamberlain II.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Public Health Nurse, Lori Desmaris, Desmaris. Did I get that terribly wrong? Member, term to expire July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Rent Control Board. Miriam Hollander is a member, July 31st, 2020. That's me.
Second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Actually, that should be 2022.
Really?
You're on.
Say yes, say yes still and change it.
I tried to recruit my neighbor, but she wouldn't.
All right, 2022.
Yeah.
Aye. Board has two vacancies. It's a fantastic board. You might meet once a year if that happens. I'm disappointed that the new town administrator has resigned from said board.
Maybe I'll come back, maybe I'll make a return appearance.
The Sealer of Waits and Measures, David Enos, the Sealer, July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Can I just ask, do we have a choice there? Isn't he the one that does like the whole area?
Will we appoint him?
Yeah, he does Taunton and he does Berkeley.
I'm just curious.
He does a very good job.
Yeah, we see his name on every gas pump.
But I think he, because of his status, he's a police officer and he's been promoted, that he probably just, he'd like to keep Lakeville and Berkeley.
Okay, all right.
Yes, for that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Smart Growth Reporting Officer, Maureen Candido, term to expire July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Special Assistant Health Agents, James Ramon, Nathan Darling, term to expire July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stormwater Management Coordinator, Franklin Moniz, term to expire July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town Council, KP Law, term to expire July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town Forest Committee. We have a vacancy for anyone who wants to join Nate and John on the Town Forest Committee. We have a vacancy. We will advertise. Tree Warden, Franklin Moniz, July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Veterans Agent and Graves Officer, Wilfred Corey. This is a term to expire April 30th, 2020. Apparently, he's been acting without a proper appointment for three months. So, this is retroactive.
Big deal. So, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Zoning Bylaw Review Advisory Committee. We have six members that are returning, terms to expire July 31st, 2020. Peter Conroy, Nathan Darling, John the Blank, Robert Mather, M. John Oliveri Jr., and Robert Pelucci. So, I'll stop there for now. That's my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have an open spot on this, which is either a selectman or a selectman's designee.
I mean, I don't mind taking that.
Perfect, so moved. If you want it, all yours. I do not. I have rent control. Term to expire July 31st, 2020. That's my motion.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wow, that was it. That ended with less fanfare than I wanted it to. Congratulations to all the people who got appointed, and we always encourage people to continue to serve. Agenda item number seven. It's a request from the police chief to appoint Antonio Amaral as a special police officer constable. So, we have a request from Chief Perkins that Antonio Amaral be appointed as a special police officer/constable with a term to expire July 31st, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number eight, a request for a reappointment of Ian Daly as a constable. So, his term is to expire July 25th, 2020.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number nine, a request for the appointment of Brian Anderson to the Open Space Committee. So, we had a letter submitted, Open Space met, they recommended his approval. His term will expire July 31st, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number 10, it's a request for a one-day liquor license for the Lakeville Lions Club, September 7th, 2019. This is from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM for their property on 170 Main Street for a one-day liquor license for the annual Family Fun Festival.
Second that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before you go, I just want you to know, I have not received the liquor license insurance or the strategic insurance in general from the vendor, so perhaps your vote could be subject to.
So amended.
Thank you.
Is the second on that?
Second the amendment.
All right, we don't need to vote on the amendment. If everyone's okay with that, we can just vote on the amended motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number 11. It's a request for a road opening permit for Riverside Drive, Cul-de-sac for Columbia Gas. So, this is.
Bob was hoping to be here.
Bob was hoping to be here, but Bob is not here. We had previously designated Franklin to sign the road opening permit so that we didn't have to have these in front of us as a board. However, apparently typically the town administrator signs the permit. Does that happen in other communities?
You approved it and then I just signed the permit.
Like the physical signature?
Yes.
Okay, got it. So, well, okay. So, I guess the question is, do we want to have this happen over and over again? Or do we want to do another six-month extension?
May I interrupt?
You may, Miss Town Administrator.
Well, thank you. Back about three years ago, you did away with the selectmen signing them on the curb cut bylaw and I was thinking maybe we could treat it like that, whereas it would go to Franklin unless it was, what did we say, Rita? What was the threshold?
Oh, on the bond?
Yeah.
We have a standard bond for 2,500 for all Columbia Gas.
Yep.
Road cuts. We don't have any bond for water departments.
Yeah. Because I would think that it would be similar to the curb cuts and, you know, more expeditious to have it rest with Franklin than it would be to come before the board every time.
I'd be happy to take these things off the agenda.
Hey, I would too, but on a big development like this, on an already accepted road, this is a little, maybe a little bit different. That is, I'm not so sure how much of the road they really have to dig up because we're on the hook, if you will, to repave that area.
Sure.
When it's done. Because it's an accepted road. So let me say this. Usually, you're right. Columbia Gas comes in, I'm going to do a gas hookup on Anaconda Drive, and you're done with it. But this is a gigantic development that is going to go on for years with lots and lots of road cuts.
Yeah.
So I don't mind Franklin doing it, but somehow he needs to report to us the significance of, do we need to retire the road?
So would you put it that there's a threshold of size?
I don't know.
Curb cuts? But I know, you know, the curb cuts is pretty similar.
Curb cuts is usually one at a time, too.
Yeah.
This is somewhat different. It's unusual that we've accepted a road and the development hasn't been developed yet. So it's a little bit unusual.
Yeah.
I don't mind this one coming back after six months, maybe? Maybe Franklin give us an update on it?
Yeah.
Only, this isn't a single one. This is lots of road cuts, I would assume.
But single ones, you would be...
Single ones, I'm all set with already, you know, built houses. It's just a hookup.
Yeah, so I'm good with that if you want to put together a policy that we can vote on at a future meeting, just on that with the single one. And I'm okay with extending this for another six months with having Franklin do it just to...
Yes.
Move it on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's my motion.
Yeah. And I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
No, I think at this point, he probably knows more than we would anyway. So I would assume that he would... So...
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number... You have terrible timing. The other lady had really good timing. She walked in, she said two words. So you're all set. We just voted six-month extension. You get to talk to Franklin.
Okay. I volunteer to repave the road.
Can I ask why there's a time limit on it?
Just from the...
Usually hookups for gas and or curb cuts is usually single homes. This is a gigantic development that we're technically on the hook for repaving that entire road. So I want Franklin to report to us after six months the status of it. It's a significant one. It's not like hooking up gas to your personal single home on your street.
I get that, but he's approved all the water and everything else all at once, so I don't know whether the gas is separate. Here's my question.
He is approved. He is going to approve them. He's going to give us a status at the end of six months.
Right. And what we'll probably want to make sure we do, Tracy, is just to put something in there in the, you know... Again, it'll come right at the end of the year with all like the liquor license appointments and something. So maybe in November, we revisit it so that it doesn't end up being a delay between overlap. You know, like it should overlap the appointment to the next six months as opposed to having any sort of a gap in between the two.
But he's going to approve them. I just want to report from them the status of the road. That's really what I'm more interested in.
But you still do the water tie-ins, too. Franklin doesn't do the road cuts for water.
Well, not cutting it. I'm not cutting the actual road here either. That's the thing. I'm just in the road layout. I'm not digging up the road.
And some on the sidewalk?
But that last time limit, unfortunately Columbia is the worst utility company on going. I hope they're watching. And so in that whole timeframe, they didn't do one connection. You know, I can't control their timing or what they do, so... All right. So we'll just do it that way.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll show you.
Thanks. So agenda item number... I guess we'll go to old business. I don't... We have some new business?
445?
Oh, it's 445. Good dad. Hopefully, we get through everything. But I am happy to go back to agenda item number one. So agenda item number one is to meet the Lake Cam directors to review the 2018 reviewed financial statements. It's not an audit, which is a catch. Different service. So again, welcome to the directors and executive director, who happens to be here, to review the 2018 financial results. We have received the statement of financial position, financial statements. There's a couple of things on here that seem to have, you know, changed a little bit from previous years with regard to essentially the money that's been granted, $25,000 that was implemented for the COA cameras starting in 2019. It was temporarily restricted for that purpose in 2018. Other than that, I know, you know, we had talked in the past. I'm happy for you guys to kind of give us an overview of what programs and things like that that you're doing. But certainly, you know, we have some additional licensing revenue that's come in. There's some additional revenue, other revenue. I'd like to just ask some questions on that and just kind of get an overview on how you guys feel like you're doing. It certainly is in a much more sustainable position than it was previously. Granted, $25,000 of that is reserved for capital expenditures. So the revenue is increased by that amount, which isn't really recurring revenue, but...
I do apologize that our treasurer and assistant treasurer, vice treasurer, are not here. Family obligations and Pat O'Neill is stuck at work. So Jose and I can try and work our way through the answers to your questions, but we may not have the precise answers. I do have a check for you.
Okay. I like checks?
Yeah, that's never a problem.
Well, this year it's not a problem for us either.
Yes. Can I do that?
Sure.
Madam Chair, with your permission, I'd like to put this on your table there. We have a survey that's on Survey Monkey right now for the cable advisory committee to help us with the renewal of the Comcast license, which comes up in 2021, I believe.
Is that on our website?
No, this is on Survey Monkey.
It was a mailer.
It was a mail. And you folks have sent an email, thank you, Tracy, to everybody who's on the email list. So we've gotten over 250 responses so far.
Fantastic.
We're hoping to get closer to 500. This is the, in lieu of rent for the library, for $2,400.
Fantastic.
We're also making a donation to the library for $2,400. I'm sorry, $2,600 for $5,000 going back to the town. In terms of the changes in the income, you're correct. The $25,000 was not spent in 2018. It was spent in 2019. There was also an increase in Verizon capital funding from the contract that started in 2018. So you saw revenues go up there also. We are, I believe, now officially in negotiation with Comcast to get the same deal with Comcast.
Great.
Any other questions on the finances? We have a couple of pieces of news that have just happened in the last week.
Yeah. I mean, does anyone have any questions on this? I think my question's always related to sustainability and ensuring that, you know, we've got a viable nonprofit, which its goal is designed, of course, to give back to the community, which you guys have been doing. I always like to hear the stats on the additional programs, things you've covered and things like that. So that's all I have.
I just did have one question. Why the insurance went down?
Yeah, what, $200, I think?
Yeah, three-ish, right? I was just curious, that's all.
I'm not 100% sure.
I didn't know if it was just a new company, cheaper rate, or if there was changes.
Maybe in a timing issue?
Okay. Just curious.
I do want to point out, and this is not the first time you've heard this, that we are in the midst of a ramp up in income. Not a lot of income, but a modest income from Freetown. Jose negotiated a very nice contract with them that has an escalating clause. And we're doing this because we do a lot of stuff for Freetown kids through the regional high school. We have at least one member or two members on our board now from Freetown. So we're trying to form an informal partnership in a way to serve them because of the school relationships and also because Old Colony is, has 90-some Freetown students in it, and we're a member of that region as well. And we do a lot with the schools in terms of school videos.
So that's included in the other income line item, right?
Correct. We started $5,000 with them in 2012. We've ramped that up. We're at $10,000 in 2018, $12,500 in 2019. We'll be at $15,000 next year. It's more commensurate to the cost of covering the education programs that we do, which is about $200 per year. But we've also added, at Freetown's request, coverage of their Fourth of July fireworks, their Fourth of July parade, their Christmas tree lighting. And I think that's all for now, but they've made requests of us because they don't have a public channel. Can we put that on our education channel so they can see it also?
Great.
So we're working with them on that.
Just to remind you that of our three channels that we have, Lakeville has, Lake Cam has, the educational channel is shared with Freetown because the school system is...
So does Free Cam?
Free Cam, yeah.
So are they a nonprofit? Are they still putting it through? They never made nonprofit stats, and they're putting it through their government?
It's owned by the town.
Yeah. Okay.
They have showed some interest in starting their own. But I think they're in negotiation with Comcast now. They're only at 1%, so their revenues are very low. We really can't sustain it. So we've tried to help them in the past on improving that.
Is it... Yeah. Just interesting in terms of negotiations or potential negotiations between Freetown and Lakeville. I know Lake Whitman-Hanson, they do a combined community nonprofit. So they're actually bringing in revenue from subscribers, both in Whitman and Hanson.
We made that offer, and Freetown wanted to continue with just the education channel for now. But with the ramped up revenues that they were paying, they want a little bit more services.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Just so you know, because Verizon takes the three Lake Cam channels and distributes it to Lakeville, Middleborough, the ORCTV channels, which are Marion, Matt Hoist in Rochester, Taunton, Mansfield, and others, Lake Cam is actually seen on Verizon in 23,000 homes, which is six times more than...
We do.
Than we have. So we are already regionally seen. So be careful what you say in meetings.
But unfortunately, we don't get a piece of the subscriber revenue in any other community, right? We're still sustained by...
It's in the Verizon contract that they are allowed to share that with other towns. And we get to see those same towns plus West Newbury for some...
West Newbury.
And we don't share anything with them, so...
Yeah.
So for example, like I know Lake Cam was at the Plymouth County Commissioners' meeting, and it seemed like the commissioners were pretty excited to have Lake Cam there.
They've never had any coverage.
Right. So that is something that would get, go through that channel, let's say, to go to other communities?
Correct. And we also offered it...
Through Verizon.
Through Verizon?
Through Verizon only.
Okay.
So the condition is that those towns have to have Verizon in order to see it. We also cover, have been covering the Plymouth County Commission on the Status of Women. So I've been trying to expand our horizons here since we are seeing so many homes. And that is part of our... We're part of Plymouth County.
Yeah.
We'd like to know what's going on over there, too. As you know...
Yeah. No, they were really excited to have the camera there.
That was a pretty interesting pair of meetings that they had.
Yeah. So as a plug, if anyone wants to donate to Lake Cam as a nonprofit, we'd be happy to take your money and go to the survey.
And it's tax deductible.
I actually did the survey. It only took about five minutes.
Four minutes. I have it on there.
I put some thought into it.
If that survey, though, be specific, is really for the cable access...
Yeah.
So committee working on your behalf.
Cable TV access.
Yep. Great.
Any other questions? In terms of programming, the number of programs we've done has gone up, but the expansion has slowed. So we did about 550 last year. This year, we're going to do a little over 600. But we've had to tamp that down a bit because we don't want to exceed our revenues.
I look at the cash as a very strong position. Do I misstate it if I consider it to be somewhat like the E and D? I mean, it's a pretty safe number.
That number is actually saving up to build a studio. It's not for general expenses. Most of it is capital money, which we have been saving for a very long time, up to 30 years, in order to build a studio in Lakeville.
So it's board-designated restricted?
It's targeted money.
It's targeted. It's not restricted.
Right. And it's, at the moment, it's in the CD, so...
Remember, we have a lot of open space, but I consider to be in the schools. So we've somewhat... When I say free, it's not always free, but we own Assawamps that has an exam. They used to have 700-plus students. Now they have less than five. They have lots of open space. And I think we can figure out the access part, the bathrooms part, that type of thing. So keep in mind that we have a strong asset in town.
You may recall that we used to have, we, Lakeville, used to have a studio in the basement of...
High School.
The high school. It's still there. We walked through it. It has 1990, 1980 style equipment. It's very old. And the air conditioning doesn't work, so it's, it would muggy and moldy.
Right.
It's unfortunate because in some aspects, it's a good space. There are access limitations to it. And as with all these things, you get into turf issues and political issues. You know what that's like.
Right. Right. Okay. We should continue to look at that with the school committee, whether it be there, whether it be Assawamps. Assawamps, it obviously is more under control as a building site.
The other requirement, technical requirement we have is that we need to be close to one of the main fibers along the road. When we went to Aponekwa, we had to put in a long fiber to get, to connect the studio in the basement to the rest of the world.
If I can...
Assawamps is close to the roads.
Right.
If I can interject, John, on my time in the cable committee, you can't have it in a school because of the quarry and sorry issues because you have community producers and guests. And if they were to enter the studio, they would all need quarry and sorry forms and fingerprinting.
But I look at it as a separate wing that doesn't access to the school.
Yeah, Rainham did that.
Let me speak to that. The young man we worked with years ago...
Rainham did that at their middle school.
In Rainham.
Yeah.
Right. They have their studio in the school.
So they have a separate entrance?
And they've managed it all to avoid that problem.
Yeah, you can do it. You just can't have access to the school proper, there is. But as long as there was bathroom facilities and significant enough space for everyone, it would probably work.
So is there anything that you guys need or request or desire from us?
I want to thank you. Thank you for mentioning fiber. Thank you for the fiber connection that you approved long ago between the new police station and the library. That's already been done. We just need to connect the boxes on either end. Same goes for the senior center. So the excess number of fibers that were already connected to the town network, we were able to use one of them, which was dark. There's nothing going over it. So TMLP connected those to the building, and now we just need to connect the boxes that will send the signal back to the library for us. Thank you for that. Second of all, the police station installation should start either this week or next. Nate Darling has already told me that the certificate of vacancies has already been signed, and insurance is done, so now we can get in there and start installing. And last thing, on Friday, we found out that the FCC is pulling the channel cost provision from their rulemaking, which was the most dangerous one to peg access. HD channels cost a million dollars a year. SD channels probably cost $500,000 a year. That was the biggest threat to public access funding through the contract. And the FCC has decided to pull that from that rulemaking, which is really good news. So the only in-kind donation that Lakeville currently gets from Verizon and Comcast is the free drops for televisions in the town buildings. So at some point, we have to discuss whether the town buildings want to keep that and whether Lake Cam pays for them or whether the town pays for them. But that's really good news. Really good news. That big threat is off the table.
Great. So we don't have to not understand what the, you know, the potential article was at town meeting because it has been resolved and we don't have to get the... That's different ones? That one's still...
That's Massachusetts. That's the revenue department revenue.
All right. I still don't understand that one, but that one's still a threat potentially.
Not really. It's really a process in reporting.
The sub-recipient, because I noticed in the reviewed financial statements, too, of course, it says that, you know, Lake Cam does not have an agreement with the town of Lakeville to remit all the funds over to Lake Cam. And that was really more the concern, right? Was in the event it was subject to appropriation?
Yes.
Was an issue that if the funds weren't available, then we have to appropriate over...
There is this 50% per subscriber dollar amount that goes directly to the town.
That's the licensing fee, right?
The licensing fee. So that may be what's talked about in there.
But for sustainability, am I off base? Aren't they talking about doing away with the subscriber fees, which is where you get your revenue from? Isn't that going to go away? The $4 and a half?
Percent, 4%.
Right.
As long as we keep renewing contracts with Verizon and Comcast.
But I think they only want to do five-year contracts now, licenses now?
Verizon's doing five-year contracts.
Because they're going to do away with those subscriber fees.
Right. I think the issue, too, is just fewer and fewer subscribers are signing up with Comcast and Verizon.
That's where they have to get on the internet providers and treat them as cable providers in order to get...
It's going to actually go the other way technically. What we know of, what we know as cable TV, which is, we know as digital data, but as cable TV is going to become obsolete, and everyone will have streaming channels as internet sites, if you will.
Right.
And there will be no regulations on that and no fee for that, so...
The 5G wireless is what they're targeting to get rid of the cables. Thing is, in order to get a signal to those 5G transmitters and receivers on poles, they still need fibers. And they still need to pay the town for placement of those transceivers and receivers. And 5G is a high-speed microwave frequency that doesn't do well with trees and rain.
It's truly line of sight.
It's line of sight. So it probably works well in...
In space.
In space and suburbs, but not so much where there are lots of trees. And the rain one was a surprise to me. It degrades the signal. So yes, they can talk about 5G as a possibility, but it's going to be difficult to work in a rural environment with lots of trees.
And they'll have to have lots and lots of computers all over the place. But that's a story for another time.
Absolutely. No, I think you guys provide a valuable service to the community. I appreciate it. And I think the community is a little bit more well-informed.
And I just want to say this. We did have one high-profile failure this year. We have changed our procedures to make sure that doesn't happen again. But I cannot guarantee that we will not have failures in the future. We don't have redundant systems. We are, you know...
The redundancy is on that of the taxpayer to attend and/or participate in public meetings. Although there are not public meetings, there are meetings held in public to which everybody is entitled to attend, and we encourage people to attend. You provide a convenient method by which people are able to access that in their homes after the meeting. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we have some new business, apparently, but let's talk quickly about the old business. Agenda item number 13, which is an update on the police station. the old business, agenda item number thirteen, which is an update on the police station. We just have a couple of dates that we're trying to figure out, I don't know if Matt has finalized these dates yet.
He changed the date, I think we have it in here, the August twenty-fourth ribbon cutting is now in the same pathway as the triathlon, so he tentatively suggests the seventeenth of August.
I think that would be an interesting obstacle to have during the triathlon, you must navigate your way in and out.
That would not work.
Could be something. All right, so I guess we'll wait to hear on when the actual ribbon cutting and opening ceremonies will be on the police station. An update on Route seventy-nine, we're waiting to hear back from Mass DOT on the twenty-five percent design, do we have an update?
Yes, well, I forwarded the document, I believe, on Friday, what Matt Shute had sent to Mass DOT. The comment should be, they have ninety days to comment, should be less than that because they were on the sidewalk, but I did forward, I brought it with me, if anyone wants to take the design that Matt sent us somewhere here. I only printed out one copy
Just asking for her comment.
But I did email them to you.
Yeah, so if we want to get any comments back, maybe at the next meeting or the meeting after that, back to town administrator?
And have you met with the land-taking appraiser yet, and discussed with him his approach, money, not just money for him, but his view of land takings that are required based upon
Mass DOT said you have to wait for the seventy-five percent design before he even starts that.
When would that be?
Well, hopefully after the ninety-day comment period on the twenty-five percent, they'll approve it as a seventy-five percent.
Okay, so the appraiser is not doing anything at this point?
No, no.
Okay.
But his fee is around ten or eleven thousand?
I don't care about his fee, that's such a miniscule part of the bill.
I do have that latest email, if anyone wants to take a look at the utility easements that changed.
All right, yep, I have it in my email.
Yeah, that was the one that got sent, right?
Okay, so what was the new business that you mentioned that we have?
Oh, just a letter or a post from Senator Michael Roderick's. As part of last year's closeout supplemental budget, the legislature invested in school safety grants. I'm happy to announce the following five school systems who receive the grants in order to make the schools safer for our students, blah, blah, blah. Freetown, Lakeville Regional School got sixty-five thousand in safety grants.
Great.
We talked to the business manager today, and they've already got plans to implement that in the schools.
Perfect, all right, fantastic. So agenda item number fourteen is any other business they may properly come before the meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that, again, not that this is necessarily a discussion about marijuana zoning, because this is really in the purview of the planning board, but just so that we're aware of what the timeline is, and if the planning board requires anything from us to keep this moving, if we have any responsibility for that, that's more the conversation I just wanted to have on this. From what I see, that there is a draft bylaw that has been drafted by town council, which is, I guess, probably a planning board, you guys met on Thursday of this past week, which was the
The eleventh.
The eleventh, so you had a chance to go through the proposed bylaw, and whatever changes or amendments that you're going to have to it, we'll be going back and forth with town council, there are none, so if we could, maybe if you attended, I don't know, Maureen, you want to give us an update, or Maureen, just on where it is in the timeline? Because I just see the timeline on here, I'm just curious as to make sure that everything's on track, or is ink, or?
I can speak to it, is that okay?
For parts, yes.
All right, great.
Yet again, I'm just kind of interested in what's happening, where's it going, and then when you have the public hearing, that's when, in my opinion, is the time that I will be presenting any thoughts that I have on it.
So with the meeting on the eleventh, I provided the information that town council had drafted, the planning board reviewed it, reviewed the maps, and reconfirmed their decision to go forward with holding the meeting, the public hearing on the eighth of August, and, you know, having the public notices with the timeline that they had already agreed upon.
And that's going to be where?
Senior Center, Lakeville Senior.
Senior.
All right.
I suppose I can, once again, I'd save mine for them, but I certainly am strongly opposed to what's being presented, so I don't want any surprises when I go to, hopefully go to the meeting, so it's certainly not in line with what the taxpayers had approved in the past, so I would not be at all looking forward for approval of it, and I'm somewhat disappointed that we spend legal money, but be as that may, I'll bring that up at the August eighth meeting, too.
I'm not going to be here for that meeting, so I don't want anyone to think that I'm not interested, but I just can't be here for that, and if I have questions, I'll try to ask ahead of time, just, or whatever, somehow, but.
My role here is just primarily to support the planning board through the process in conjunction with Kathy Murray, who supports the planning board, so I'm just
Facilitating the information.
That is correct.
Sync, you want to sync anything?
The, obviously, we usually disagree with John, and this time I still do, I think what we've done is that we found a way of getting exactly what the people thought they were voting for, they thought they were voting for industrial zone, of marijuana being in the industrial zone, and this better locates in the industrial zone, nothing was added to industrial zone, nothing was taken away, I mean, some was taken away. We unfortunately have some old zoning in Lakeville that really has nothing to do with what anyone ever wanted to have built, the six-hundred-acre plan next to the high school that's zoned industrial, nobody ever planned to have that be industrial, or to have that be a place to, you know, grow marijuana or sell marijuana or anything like that, and so we took out some of those and left. Every single place that has applied so far for any marijuana uses in Lakeville is covered by what we covered, they don't lose a single site, and the schedule, we checked ahead of time, I checked ahead of time, actually with the town, and for when, if there was going to be a fall meeting and when this fall meeting was going to be, and we just backed up from there, week by week by week. We have to keep the schedule that we're on right now, or else we will miss it. It isn't that easy to stay on schedule, and we have to, I was able to talk to town council, I was able to, and I think we can still work on that and make that system better.
Yeah, and I know, I mean, that's why I'm glad that Maureen's involved and under the direction of the town administrator, just to make sure that the boards and commissions have what they need and the resources available to you to move forward on these things.
And we want to be careful to get exactly what we, what we want.
Jose? This meeting's going to be held on a Thursday night at the senior center.
Right.
It may bring in a big crowd. Usually we can't use the big room because it's set up for Friday morning.
Oh, we can discuss that, absolutely.
So we may need to ask senior center for special permission to use the big room that night.
And just replace it the way you found it, and if you add donuts, it might actually work.
It's the key.
Just put a donut on every table afterwards, the cafe in the morning, so, if anybody else has any other things to talk about, I think this is great, thank you, and I appreciate this. So that being said, I don't think we have any other business, so I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.